So, uh, ten a.m. we will have a roll call of Commissioner President.
Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Commissioner Mullins.
Aye.
Cornby, present.
I must stand for the pledge of limitation as you desire.
Let the leaders do the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the wonderful springtime and the weather you've given us, and we appreciate what you do for us. We ask you, being on meeting today, help us do this and help us to do your will. Thank you for all that you are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The fifth agenda is, minutes of last few minutes, the annual bid rejection acceptance by the collector and the approval of the pest control bid by the maintenance department. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'm in and agree with the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Mullins?
And I'm second.
By Commissioner Wilkinson. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Uh, okay, we have a bid opening for eight paving projects, and we will open these bids now, our sealed bids. We do that publicly, and then they will be displayed on the table out there. And then, as I will announce, a short recess.
Very short.
So the people that are interested can come up and photograph all the bids that they wish. Just don't alter anything. So we'll do that. And the note says that we won't act on them today. The county clerk will keep the original bids, and he will issue copies to the auditor's office and to that department head. And then the auditor will make sure that all the bid requirements are satisfied, and the department head will then decide the best bid. Maybe next week we'll take that decision.
I have a question.
About how many bids do we have?
We have four. They all came in this morning. How many?
Is this new bid process in response to, you know, issues from the state auditor, or?
Bid process, uh, you going to the auditor?
This new process that we're doing now, spreading them out?
No, we've always done this.
You've always done this, spread these bids out on the table? Okay.
We always display our sealed bids there, and people come up, and we have a short recess for them to do that.
Okay.
That's very hard.
And then they can get out here. Now, what is new, we started first year was, uh, going to the auditor. I mean, just, now, the auditor, because some of the things that we looked at, when we looked at the bid process wasn't, I'm not saying there was something, somebody was stealing, but it needed to make sure that it met what we asked for in the bid. And so the auditor's department now looks at that to make sure before they, we can make the recommendation to approve it, to make sure that they did follow the rules of the bid process. We had one earlier that they, I think they didn't put the numbers of what things cost. They just said one and a half percent less than normal. That doesn't define anything, so.
We don't make the recommendation. We just review it.
May I have you come up and then open it, because these multiples, so you give the most prominent page.
Well, there's eight different projects. We're thinking of separating them by project.
It is.
We like restarted this in July of last year, so, and.
Yeah. Multiple bids on this one, so we're gonna separate so they can come up, take pictures of all of it. Uh, audio? We're putting it on online. We're putting it on, but it, since it's so, I don't know that much about IT, it's got so much information on it, we have, you have to go to a link to another site that can handle the audio. The presiding commissioner, we'll have him announce if, who's making motions. But on a vote, if it's unanimous, we won't call it. If it's anything but unanimous, then, say, this person voted no, so that you can listen to the recording and know who voted no, who voted yes. Most time you can tell the difference between the voices, but that's the only way we're gonna do it. If we ever decide to put it on, on video, it'd be different, but that seems to be the best way to do it. So if it's unanimous, there won't be any copies.
Unfortunately, a lot of people won't recognize the voice.
The voice, yeah.
So in addition to being able to walk around the table and inspect these, are these now gonna be uploaded, given your new website policy, for people to view?
Uh, you know, we could, we could upload the, the, uh, winning bid, uh, and if there's any discrepancy, we, we, but, like, when we do it in, in February, I mean, we had a hundred and fifty bids, and, and of which, a hundred, some of them weren't even in the ballpark, so I don't know, I think we, if we, that would be something we could prioritize, the winning bid, details, and the exacts on it. That way, if somebody wanted to contest it, they could do that. But I see no reason, like, we had eight different bids, but the eighth place bidder wasn't even in the.
Right. No, I don't mean the eighth place bidder. I'm assuming there's some around, there's some elimination round where you narrow it down?
No, and this is a, unless there's somebody that didn't meet the specs, or, for example, we bid the original, uh,
Channel Three.
Uh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, the original, uh, three question. Bug, bug, uh.
Exterminator.
Exterminating, that we get earlier day. When they bid it, they realized they didn't bid the building, I believe it was on Weber, too, so they had to say, wait a second, we, we have to have that, so we have to not take any of the bids, rebid it. Otherwise, it's low person that time. And, and if, we haven't had this problem since I've been here, but if it's some low pro, person that we've had problems with, let's say today we had a painting company that we discontinued, we had problems with, they were a little bit bitter, they have the building, and that would be the event, then we could put both the bids and the reasoning behind on the one.
Another thing, by displaying these bids now, there's no way that anybody can alter them from that sealed document to that table. So this, and the fact that everybody's gonna be able to photograph them, that locks in these bids.
With the cameras, phones, that makes it real good, because they, I think, you guys can take pictures. Take, you know what yours are, so you can take pictures of the other, other bids and, uh, know what you're looking at. That way, you know there's nothing any.
Are the specs for the job ever altered after a bid is accepted?
It's not supposed to be. That, that, that's exactly what the auditor's supposed to be looking at. It's, does this meet the specs? If it doesn't, then we get a problem. That's why we rebid a couple earlier in the year, because the specs, the people, they turned in did not meet.
I mean, I mean the county specs. Does the county ever offer its bid specs on its RFP after?
Not that I'm not aware of. If there's some specs, and we offer it and then change the specs in the middle of it. Now, sometimes.
If we do, we rebid it.
Yeah, so, yeah, we do rebid it, but if you have, have a road project, and you get there and you find out, oh, we didn't realize that this base needed to be widened, too, and so then there's, sometimes you alter that on the fly, when you go in, knowing that it's not like a whole bid.
Eight projects, there's four bidders in each project, and they're all laid out. Each individual road.
On, on these road projects, we bid that on estimated tonnage of asphalt. And so, you know, doing this on the side, whatever can alter that, feathering out can alter that. So there is a discrepancy, if you will, about the estimated tonnage and the asphalt tonnage built. But that's not a change that's.
And that's common practice in this industry. They, they get it. If they get the tonnage out, and they're on the site, and they need to put a turn end that had collapsed or whatever, it's still bid per ton. And they know that they're gonna have to alter that a little bit, the total bill.
Yeah, they can go with the.
Now, but you may ask, this is the problem I had when I was mayor, is the oil prices. Are these subject to anything, or is it?
Changes monthly.
Yes, it's based on the oil price changes monthly. That's something else that you need to know on bidding roads.
And that is your all bid at the April.
The April index.
Because that's your largest component of asphalt.
And that information is put in the RFPs? Okay.
That's why they're bidding, everything should be, now, just now. Because you, you can't believe, when the oil prices change, we had that problem over, over the city, then suddenly, once a person was bidding March oil prices, when it's built in February, and they're, they could change dramatically with what's happening in the world, especially like yesterday with the Iran, uh, the, that caused some spikes in the oil price. We, we give the PDCs for them to bid to. Did you get this, Pam? Yeah.
Jesse James, what?
The clock, we're nearly finished with the photography, then we'll go back into regular session.
We're ready.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you for your bid. Um, okay, we're going to talk about way of penalty and interest, Susan Robinson, this year. Thank you. Okay, come up forward. Please stick to the microphone.
We're not gonna ask you to sing or anything, but we just, that way, you could be on record.
Okay. Um, basically, I bought a house, and the deed was entered on the sixth of April. And I went la, let's see, last year to try to pay my real estate taxes, due my due diligence. Is it all you could have filled in for the year? Okay. Well, didn't come, and unfortunately, I live on One Bike North Park Side, and there is a north side, South Park Side, street in the low. So, my bill went to the wrong one, and then I finally got it. And, yes, I waited a while to come to you all to pay my taxes, because I've been in customer service and done taxes, you know, done all kinds of things, and I've never been mad enough when you want me to answer your questions. So anyway, I'm here because, of course, I have accrued, um, you know, delinquent fees from seventeen. I know I owe for eighteen, because I waited to come here, so I would not miss out on this. But, anyway, I just basically want the delinquents waived from seventeen, and then I can go ahead and pay my real estate taxes.
How much is right now?
Uh, I, I wasn't clear on, on the note from Pam, the collector. Uh, those are the difference in those two amounts of, one ninety-two, twenty-one. And I assume that's the penalty and interest. I don't know that. So, and, do we have anyone to collect the call?
Yes.
Is that it?
Can you address that?
Yes, that, that is the penalty's interest.
Okay, microphone please.
Yeah. Uh, I'll watch this coming up. Pam is at Continuing Education Jefferson Center today, which is required.
Okay, excuse me?
This one.
Yes, sir, that is the difference.
And your name is?
I am Jessica Parton, Michaelite's office. Um, the difference is from what taxes would have been when she came in in February of twenty seventeen. So it's not the base amount, but it is the twenty seventeen amount when she was in the first time, um, minus what is due currently as of April. So the one ninety-two is the penalty's interest.
One ninety-two, twenty-one, is the penalty and interest amount?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is there a recommendation from the collector's office on this?
Um, I, I have the same copy of the letter that you have from Pam, I assume. We don't recommend waiting. Don't be an interest in this case.
Because it's not the county's fault?
Um, it's, it's not exactly the county's fault. What, the way that we usually handle it is, everybody gets a bill, and if the bill does go to the wrong address, usually the, the person is responsible for finding that bill, since it's the same one that comes every year. Um, I'm sorry, I understand what's, what's going on here. But whenever we get return mail, we do everything that we can to get it to the right address. But if we don't have the current address, that's really our responsibility. There's not any way for us to find it, without the customer calling in and recording that to us.
Okay. Do I, uh, any other comments you need to say? Go ahead.
Okay. I just handed Mr. Engler my deed, and the right address is on my deed.
Yes, we see that.
And when I did, um, go to talk to Pam, she said they have not received the bill back. But she did tell me that the bill went to Dale Farmington. I have no idea who that is, but I never received it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I came in, was ready to pay, you know, my taxes and everything. I did my, I believe I did my due diligence, and that's why I'm asking this, I would be.
That's a good question. Uh, if, now, the, the amount is for one ninety-two, twenty-one, so if, if the county commission would forgive that amount, you have every intention of going and, uh, getting the two thousand and eighteen corrected? Is that what I heard you saying?
You mean the address?
No, well.
Bring your taxes up to date.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have a checkbook. I'm willing to go pay today.
Right, the current.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, they wouldn't let me pay the current one.
Right, right, I understand that. But if, if, if the county would forgive the one ninety-two, twenty-one from two thousand and seventeen, you're willing to go ahead and make up for the two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, because that was my fault. I didn't want to come in, but.
Sure, sure, sure.
I'm on a set in, um, and it's a big deal to me.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, gentlemen, I'm confused. It says mailing address on two thousand and seventeen deal was incorrect, but it was in her name. I'm, I'm confused. But one ninety-two, twenty-one.
But it went to Dale Drive.
I would, I would move that we, uh, forgive the amount of one ninety-two, twenty-one, if she's willing to get two thousand and eighteen cleaned up, and get this cleaned up.
Yeah, I'm willing to go pay right after we're done here.
Have motion, Commissioner Mullins?
I'll say, Commissioner, I have a comment.
Commissioner, uh, Wilkinson, comment, sir?
Wilkinson. Basically, generally, when, when there's a problem like this, or, or petition to forgive the penalty, it's generally, uh, if it's clear that the county made a mistake, uh, either not getting it big or doing whatever, then that, that's really, we're asked to do it. But you said yourself, you waited to come in and pay.
For eight, yeah, because, I mean, I knew I would owe back interest and everything for eighteen. That was my choice. Seventeen, it went to Dale Drive. I have no idea who that is. It never made it to me. Yes, the county sent it out. They sent it in my name to that address, and I have no idea.
But again, see, I, I don't see where the county failed there. Do you, I mean?
Well, since my correct address is on my deed, something.
And that's the address they sent it to, right?
She's saying, no, no, sent to another address.
That's what's so confusing.
Was it sent to Farmington, Farmington? So not even the right town?
Right.
And do we, we, you don't have an envelope for where it was sent, or?
No, I never received it.
I'm having problems, too, and I live right next to her.
Sure. Was, did the mail just deliver it to the wrong place? I just.
I assume so. Because I didn't get it for the first time.
I'd like to add, I, I actually live right behind her. We've been having problems with our mails for the past six months. It's been crazy. We've been getting other people's mail from other streets. It's.
And I can see as a person getting that, say, well, that's not mine, but it has to go away.
Yeah, this is.
What I don't understand is on the, uh, the one that says.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Yeah. On this, their, right, mailing address on two thousand and seventeen deal was incorrect, but it was in her name. So I, I don't understand, uh, I, I don't understand the issue. And, you know, the county collector's office does an exemplary job by getting out the thirty-some-odd thousand that you all in charge, or forty thousand. So, you know, uh, every now and then, there probably gonna be a, an error. So, uh, my motion still stands.
Okay, a motion, second. Any other comments? Your phone.
I didn't understand. I'm just curious. Ma'am, how long did you wait when you didn't get your tax bill? How long did you wait before you went in?
Uh, I went there about three weeks ago, and, and all this stuff, too, on top of not wanting to go and complain and whatever, because I didn't really think it was the county's fault. I mean, it wasn't mine either that I didn't get it. But I did, I live on Dale Drive.
Because they, they delivered to the wrong address.
Yeah, because Pam had told me that, that's where, you know. Okay, but I, I don't think I finished your answer.
So you're saying you didn't get your tax bill at the end of the year in?
In seventeen.
Okay, and then you waited to come in and ask about it?
Yeah, I mean, for eighteen, yes, I did. Because I've done customer service work and stuff, and I don't want to kill the messenger, because I don't know whose fault. I, I just know that it's not mine. No, it got sent to the wrong address.
And you're saying they wouldn't let you pay eighteen until seventeen was taken care of?
Correct.
I got you.
That's rude, that's, that's.
I, no, I, I was understanding. I'm just trying to, you know, I get, not to be knocking you or anything, but I, if I don't get my tax bill, because I know it comes every year, at the same time.
I tried to pay eighteen or seventeen, and they told me, when I went to, uh, Pam Williams' office, or wherever I can, when you got, I guess, the refusing you. They told me I'd get it at the end of eighteen. I said, okay, are you sure?
Did you have any, uh, any other comments?
I can't hear her, Harold. She was talking, and you cut her off.
It's time to call for what we've, I've covered those comments. Okay, uh.
I understand that, but you shouldn't interrupt her.
Okay. I call for a vote. We have motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All three of you. Thank you.
Can I go pay now?
Yeah. She can play, she will.
Come with me. Thank you.
Uh, will there be some documentation necessary in that?
I do have my deed, so.
Yeah, we'll have to, if, if you want, if you want to take care of that, we'll send down the documentation.
We'll make the copy, yeah. That's fine. Thank you, guys.
We have to, uh, send it down, and we will, I, I've got the figures in there. We'll, we'll just get it down to you afterward.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we need the top copy approval of the law enforcement board minutes, as displayed on the front table. And copies will be made available if you desire. And, uh, do I have a motion?
That we accept the recommendation, our recommendation, the authority of the law enforcement to use monies to buy a police car.
And I have a question, Commissioner Wilkinson, and a second.
We're good then.
I know.
Aye.
Second. How old is Mr. Mullins? No comment?
And also, is a resolution that goes along with the matter?
Uh, yes, and that is, that is on the table, too, if we.
Okay.
And I would be happy to put that on our website.
Yes.
Can you do that?
Yes. Okay. Uh, okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, thank you. Um, okay, authority generated litigation on opioid issue. Probably talked with two D firms over the last few months. And, uh, this is the firm that is, in my mind, a clear leader in it. They have, that's a hurt, twenty-one counties are representing. And, uh, their cost will be the cheapest for us, and hopefully the best settlement for us. Uh, that will be, remain to be seen, but, uh, contingency is twenty percent on them, and it goes up to thirty-five on others. That'd be the cost of our doing business with them, should they succeed. And there will be no legal cost if there is no settlement. So our county taxpayer will not be facing the cost of no income. So, uh, all final settlement dollars will be awarded to the county for use by the various organizations that have incurred these costs. Uh, and I gave a short example there, but there'd be others, of course. And, uh, we're, we're working with them. I understand that, uh, your IT, that doc, uh, data is available. I've already talked to some of these organizations, and they're very, very willing to help us build the costs that we've incurred. I don't have the backup date that we go back to on this yet. Uh, so it's, it's been quite a deal, and I enjoyed working with Mr. Garvey and Mr. Schrum in this, and I would make a recommendation that we award this to, uh, this law firm, and it needs to be a roll call vote.
Uh, with that being said, I would move.
So you're gonna make the, the motion? You just made the recommendation?
He made the recommendation. I won't make a motion. I would move that we enter into agreement, uh, with Gary, the NSN low law firm, to represent Garvey, to, uh, represent the St. Francis County on opioid resolution.
Now, second motion. Commissioner Mullins first, and Commissioner Wilkinson second. And any questions?
Uh, you, you have copies.
Yes, and they're up front. Now, the resolution is up front. It's three pages of single space whereas. So I've put that up front, so that you can pick up the rest of the copies.
You would like that?
Yeah, so.
I made five copies, so they're available.
Just a second. Okay, uh, Vaughn, I think you have your hand up first.
Cindy did first.
Okay, Cindy?
The, um, I saw what you had up there, so that's fine. Um, but are you making it retroactive?
Retroactive.
The cost to be reimbursed? You said you felt sure.
Oh, yes, the cost goes back to some date that I don't have yet.
Okay, but then going for, going forward between now and the time that, um, that the suit is settled and we receive our monies, um, it was clear to me in talking to them that they, you have to stipulate where those monies are going to, because the federal judge is going to oversee that?
Yes, and that's.
And you're not, but you're not stipulating.
On the last slide, I named a few of them. Law enforcement board, autopsy cost, ambulance district, uh, fire departments that are on call, all that. So we'll have to go back and search the data and see on that particular overdose out there, how many deputies showed up, how many fire agents showed up, how many EMT people showed up.
Well, that's recouping your cost, but what really, um, the entitlement for the suit was to put it into the community so there'd be treatment and assessment, and I don't see anything there for that.
Yes, that'd be part of it, because the goal of this is to encourage, uh, treatment. If you, that, I'm not, I'm searching for a word there, but it's prevention.
Well, it's both. It's treatment.
Yes, that's the goal, and so, but.
But you're not spelling that out.
Well, it's in there.
In your litigation, you have to show actual costs.
Yeah.
Then you sue, or, or what you're talking about, future, uh, and, and that will be part of it, but that, that's gonna be broader than your actual cost.
But Mr. Garvey said that those have to be stipulated in advance of the, well, really, at the time that you sign the suit, so that they can oversee it, because they've got a committee that's overseen by the federal judge to make sure that those monies go back into the area, not, and they didn't mention anything about recouping costs, but so that there'd be treatment, so that we made progress in it.
They said that we could get the other counties' actual costs that they're recruiting, and that would help us in our pursuit of looking at those actual costs.
Said what help you for cost. I'm talking treatment, though, to address the problem, because we're not addressing the problem. Our, we're doing is, is treating and get some money back for that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay, yes, but let's look at it another way. The, the settlement will be divided based on your expenses. Now, the expenditure of those, those monies will be based on what you're talking about, prevention and recouping some of those costs. So hopefully, there'll be a lot more settlement than there were expenses.
I'm considering that you're misreading, um, the way that that's supposed to work. So I think you shouldn't sign it until we get that clarified, because I'm pretty sure you're misinterpreting.
Well, I'll review it. Yes, I'll do that. I have a paper, so I'll do that.
I'll come and talk to you afterwards.
Uh, any, Vaughn?
Um, you said it's gonna be retroactive. How many years back are you gonna go to recoup actual costs?
As I said, I'm not, I don't have that date yet, but it'll be a few years back.
Okay. And how much money do you expect to get out of this lawsuit?
Well, that's a wide open question. There's been a settlement by another group of counties. It's in the millions. I don't have that number in front of me, but this will be different than that.
Well, do you realize that they're gonna accrue the money? Um, our percentage will be based on the number of overdoses that we have reported for this county?
Yes.
Okay, but we don't have a systematic, uniform way of collecting overdose data?
It's not just overdose, it's total cost.
No, it's overdose, too.
I said not just overdose, but total cost. So, yes, all of that is coming into play. And that's why we're gonna be do, doing a lot of data mining in the near future. I've already talked with some of those groups and agencies, and they're aware of this company. Yes, Vaughn?
Okay. I was under the impression that a private company was operating the morgue.
No.
I, I thought that Dr. Russell Dietiker owned his own company, and we were supplying the cost of running the morgue.
Absolutely not. The definition of a morgue is a temporary storage place of dead human bodies. It has nothing to do with autopsies. In the, you should back into that building, we have the coroner's office, we have the morgue, and then we have a rented-out autopsy suite.
Okay.
And that's wonderful for our county, because we open the doors, and wheel from our morgue into the autopsy suite. Other counties have to transport and wait and all that stuff. But, no, the autopsies and the morgue are distinctly different.
Okay, so we're not including reimbursement for the cost of Dr. Dietiker's private business?
I said autopsy costs. I mentioned, I didn't put it on there, but autopsy costs was mentioned a while ago.
Okay.
Toxicology.
Yeah. Toxicology is an important factor. Two hundred and forty-five dollars per case.
Right. I don't think toxicology is done here. It's sent out, isn't it?
It's sent out, and it takes some time to get it back. It's a distinct cost for that labor to work.
So we don't, actually, we, as I'm understanding it. So we don't, actually, we, as I'm understanding it, you're going back and you're data mining, you don't actually, the county doesn't actually have a system for reporting or gathering information that's been in existence already? There's no existing system for gathering information or reporting?
Oh, yeah, we have bills, bills for both the autopsies.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about that, what I mean is, when you talk about opioid deaths and deaths in general and maybe someone's brought into the county jail and there's an opioid issue, are stats being kept at the jail? Are stats being kept at the county, at the police department? How are you, is there an existing system of records keeping, a standardized system that makes it easier for you to just print off what you need as opposed to going back and data mining?
I don't know that. Patient health information, that's pretty tricky there, I mean, that.
Well, I understand patient health information being tricky, but you're talking about people who are being treated or dealt with who are under the care or custody of the county or being investigated by the county? That information would naturally be included in reports, right?
Possibly, but not necessarily always. Now, uh, there's no good way to track it, that, that, that probably messes with. Sheriff?
Through our new CAD system at the, the central dispatch center, all those things, all of that information is available there. And then through our record management system at the jail, we also, uh, have access to that information. We will be working with you to get that information together too.
So you have track of every overdose that occurs in the jail regardless of what the cause is? Once they're checked into the jail, you have records of that?
Not just into jail, but if someone makes an arrest, we, the CAD system will track that and say, uh, part PD's ran in overdose or, or part killed or bombed or, it, it's all in the, in the record system that we have. Uh, they also do EMS, so the ambulance district and fire department, that, that's innocent, excuse me, same CAD system.
There's thirty trains coming through.
Yes, anyway, uh.
So is there a distinction between the overdoses that they might be arrested for because they were committing some other crime too? They're taken in there and then they're given something when they're in there, they've taken it in, we don't know the source, but they experience an overdose in it while they're in there, there's two different types of overdoses that you deal with. So is there a distinction between those two?
Well, the, the one record would be from the dispatch center. If it happened on the outside, if it happened on the inside, it'd be on our record management system, uh, jail management system in the jail which our records in jail is all, all one each system.
How far back does that system go?
Back to nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, okay, uh.
I was gonna just point out, the fact that we don't have reg, we have bills. But if anybody ten years ago would've thought, you know what, thi- this looks like it could be a drug overdose, we oughta start a, a system of tracking that, because someday in the future, I think we'll be able to get in a litigation and sue because the people that, that caused, the, the manufacturer, not the, the criminal case, but the manufacturer, we're gonna sue to try to get money, we are having to go back and recreate. If they, if you would've had that for.
So how, how would you propose to do that?
Huh?
How would you propose to do that, what records?
We have.
You have bills, but you don't necessarily have them tied into a person.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Not, not when the overdose takes place someplace else and then it's brought into the jail. So you don't have that.
If there's an autopsy, we have the name.
If there's an autopsy, but, and are you defining, are you defining overdose as an overdose that results in death? Or are you defining it as just an overdose where they're revived?
Yeah, that, I, I would assume that we are going to try to capture as many possibilities to put before the court for, uh, reimbursement as possible.
But really, what you guys are doing.
I'm not saying we're gonna make that overdose, but we're gonna, anything that could be related, I would assume that we would.
But what you're doing, a, and that's a lot of guesswork and I applaud you guys for all putting your heads together and everything, but what really is going to mandate it is what they stipulate on their end. And that should be contained in the contract, right?
Are you talking about for, yeah, and punitive part of it.
Yeah, the punitive is another whole story.
If, if this case is whether the punitive is gonna address the part that you talked about, where is this money going to? This part of it is you're showing actual damages.
But you have to be prepared for the punitive, because almost all of them are getting punitive, so.
One more comment, Vaughn?
Besides, uh, the attorneys and the county services, has there been any discussion about any specific programs to address the opioid crisis using?
Not at our level, there have been, you know, I've been involved with the, uh, health department's opioid issues and they're working on it. But, uh, at our level, no.
And we, we've just been targeted for a federal grant to deal with families that, uh, had in the court systems that are affected by opioid abuse. Uh, Judge Goff has, has been instrumental on, on getting us on that list so that, uh, it's actually a five-year grant for two hundred something thousand dollars to address that part of it. So there's different aspects we're addressing, but until, uh, we have some better clarity where, which direction we're going.
Well, Cindy brought up a good point about the directions of the funding to be spent. And so with that thought, I'd like to table this until next week, and we'll research that and see if I can come back to that starting date, uh, quickly, yes.
Would that include participation from other experts or people who have extensive experience like people like Cindy?
Okay, I'm excited to hear you, Vaughn.
Would it make sense to put together some sort of coalition or committee that includes people like Cindy and maybe some of the families out here who've been dealing right head-on with the opioid issues to come up with suggestions and proposals together?
Uh, I would recommend that we get with, with this council here, because I, I'm telling you, they, they are farther down the line than we are. And I cannot believe that they haven't started toward that, and maybe we could mirror something that the other counties are doing, or maybe they're doing it on a grander scale, saying this is the, the direction we want to be treated.
No, they're leaving it up to the counties.
Well, that, that, but there's some of them that already started that process, and that's where I'm saying, you can contact them and say, where are they at? Where could we go, could we go to Washington County, uh, could we go to, uh, Franklin? Uh, is it Green County that, that is farther along on that, and then we could model it and not have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, uh, my recommendation is that we table this, I move that we table this till we next meet. Thank you, Commissioner Mullins, what's your question? I'll second. Thank you, Commissioner Mullins, and, uh, yes, Lee, did you have a comment?
No.
I flipped your finger.
No, sir.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll, we'll table that for next week. Uh, we do a little contract with professional services, the assessor's office and, yeah, there he is.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an ongoing contract which began in two thousand and thirteen for the, uh, services of Bradley Ross Consulting, uh, dealing with quarries, inspections and evaluations of quarries for our special classes.
Thank you, Dan, Mr. Ross is an impressive gentleman. Uh, we have, the quarry is listed as a mine. And so we have many mines in our, uh, county that are active. So, uh, is that your recommendation that we extend this contract?
Yes, please.
Okay, my motion?
I would move that we, the recommendation of the assessor, that we agree with the professional services of Bradley Ross, that's a lot of special deals.
Okay, this is continuation, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Mullins, and, uh, second motion, thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson, any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, next regular meeting, here next week, uh, anytime soon, close, good luck to see ya. Other business, does anyone have correspondence? Other comments, yes, Vaughn?
Yeah, go over to the mic, excuse me, sir.
Okay, Harold, um, last summer, you announced that, um, you had forwarded the investigation of the alleged gay Wilkinson mileage theft to the special prosecutor in Washington County.
I did.
We have not heard anything since as a result, and if I'm not mistaken, the Washington County prosecutor made a public statement that you actually had not done that.
I did not.
And even if you had, he would not have accepted that case.
I did not, our prosecuting attorney at the time forwarded, and it's a sealed record.
If it, is it resolved?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a record available of this county's efforts to investigate that last year and the conclusion? Why would that record be sealed?
Because that special prosecutor took that initiative.
The special prosecutor, Josh Hedgecourt?
Yes.
Mr. Hedgecourt said he had nothing to do with that case, he never touched it.
Well, the case you're referring to.
Yes, the case we're referring to.
There was no case.
Okay, I'm confused, how can we as the public find out what actually happened with that?
You may ask that special prosecutor of Washington County what he did handle.
Okay, but I'm asking you, I mean, you forwarded it to them, how did it get sealed and why?
It is a sealed case. He, he sealed.
Okay. I'm having a problem with the fact that I feel as though there is a duty to the public to keep us informed. One, there's a duty on the part of you all to avoid shenanigans, especially taking money that you shouldn't be taking. And two, I feel that you.
Say it again, taking money we shouldn't have taken.
It is illegal to claim mileage when you are a commissioner on a first-class county, serving on a first-class county, it's a statute.
Okay, the issue you're talking, okay, go ahead.
And so, okay, so just we're on the same page. And I feel that you as a commissioner have a duty to keep us informed and to protect the county from things like that and to, you know, uphold the integrity of the county by having a more open record. Now, if Mr. Hedgecourt says that he never touched that case and you're saying that he did, then I'm wondering why there isn't a record for the public to examine so that we can figure out what happened here in the county records office? Because if you forwarded it to him, would they not?
I did, I did not.
What I'm saying is that you said you did. And so what I'm trying to figure out is if there a record of any correspondence between you and any prosecutor?
Not between me and any prosecutor.
This county and any prosecutor. I think that there should be somewhere, and I think that it would be important to this community to know that their commission has their back and is protecting their tax dollar. You ran the first time on your campaign of civility, honesty and open government. And I have been coming to these meetings for quite a while and I'm seeing less and less and less of that. And this is, I think, is a prime example. It feels as if there was a cover-up instituted to protect Commissioner Wilkinson from the consequences of his acts. And yet, I know from reading the paper that the county aggressively went after Jan Petty, Brett Burgess, Ron Barvera. And I'm wondering what's changed, why do the rules not apply across the board equally?
Okay.
And I'd like to see an investigation into this and also an explanation of what actually happened to make this case disappear from the face of the earth.
Who would you suggest we do the, would do the investigation?
Well, I, I would think that it would be your responsibility, since it was an issue that occurred here with the commission.
I can contact highway patrol to have them do, or ask them to do an independent investigation of that.
Why didn't you do it last year? Or the year before that, or the year before that, when Mr. Burgess brought it up the first time?
He was telling.
Okay, so there's a report somewhere from the original highway patrol investigation?
Just on a phone call.
Okay, so then last question, Mr. Wilkinson, did you ever return any of that money?
I did not, I wasn't aware it was being investigated.
You have no idea that you were ever being investigated or taken?
Well, what you're talking about now, I, I, this is first I've heard of that.
I mean, when, did it ever come to your attention that that money was not yours to keep?
No, that was an assertion by the then auditor. The records are there, I mean, there's, there's nothing there.
There are records.
Any questions?
You're saying there are records that we can look at?
Mileage record requests for reimbursement, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I've seen those, but I'm saying that as an au, as a county official, an elected official, who took money that you now know you should not have kept?
Well, I don't know why that, I, I.
You're not aware of the statute? Was there no training for you as a first count, first-class county commissioner? They specifically brought this up?
I'm, I'm not really clear what you're saying there, I, I've had training, I've been brought up to the.
Okay, so let me propose this. I propose that there be some sort of determination as to whether or not a statute exists that says that first-class counties who have commissioners, first-class counties cannot legally get reimbursed for mileage, because I'm pretty sure that statute exists and it's existed for a while. And if that statute exists and you are now aware of it and you are made aware of it, will you give back the money you took?
Let me interject here, the only mileage I turn in personally is for.
I'm not talking about you.
Okay, but let me explain, the only mileage I turn in personally are two conferences we are required to attend each year.
I'm not talking about that.
And the reason I, I do that is for proof that I went, partial proof that I went.
Not talking about that, I'm talking about road inspection mileage that county commissioners are not supposed to do.
I do that all the time.
That's what I'm talking about, road inspection mileage, there is a statute that says that you can't do that and you don't get reimbursed for that once you become a first-class county. It's a lot of money, that's tens of thousands of dollars that were taken from the taxpayer funds that should not have been taken and there was no prosecution. And like I said, this county's been pretty aggressive at going after people who have, for instance, logged into the payment system and written a check to a vendor who was actually owed money. People got fired over that and run out of their jobs. And yet I do know that there are other people who were in the county who were doing the same thing and who got it passed. And we're talking about a lot of money. Why isn't anyone concerned about it? Commissioner Mullins was all up in arms a couple of weeks ago about twenty-six dollars in overdue credit card charges. Tens of thousands of dollars were taken that should not have been taken. Why haven't you gotten exercised about that and sought to bring it back to the taxpayer where it belongs? Just as a matter of integrity and honesty and just doing the right thing.
Hold your arms, I don't remember, probably, uh.
The credit card charge, sure.
Anyway, uh, Commissioner Mullins, we send him all over the state on a very regular basis.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about.
I'm talking about mileage inspection.
Road inspection mileage reimbursement as per the statute. I'm not talking about the lawful business of a county commissioner. I'm talking about the fact that when we became a first-class county, it was no longer legal for county commissioners to get paid mileage reimbursement or anything else for inspecting the roads. And I know, because I've seen all the mileage reports, that Commissioner Wilkinson collected hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars every month, even after we became a first-class county. And I'm saying that is illegal, and I'm saying it is your duty to protect us as a taxpayer by doing, by doing right by us and being good stewards of our money. All of you, even you, Commissioner Wilkinson, now, give the money back, just give it back. You weren't supposed to have it, you got lucky, you didn't get prosecuted, just give the money back. Because you know you weren't supposed to have it. And if you don't know now, you should know that you weren't supposed to have it, it wasn't your money, give it back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, I'm done.
Yes.
Couple of questions. Go ahead. Um, did you have a closed session meeting yesterday?
Yes, we did have a commission.
Uh, was it about personnel?
Personnel, I'm fine with this one.
Okay, so basically that being a closed session, that information is sealed, it's not allowed in the public?
Yes.
Unless there's a vote?
And there wasn't a vote, it was just a report.
Okay, so is there some kind of governing rule on that by like the state Missouri or something that that? So even the name of whoever was involved?
That's correct.
They were not released or, or interrupted? So basically, any discussion in the public about that closed meeting? Unless, unless there's action taken. Unless there's act, so in this case, there was no action taken? There was not, there's been further, uh, information given, but not, there was no action taken. Okay. And I was present to take minutes to make sure that there was no vote taken. Okay, so basically, any discussion in the public is not based on anything? That's correct. Kind of, that's exactly, okay, thanks.
And protection of our employees.
Okay.
When will action be taken, if ever? When will there be a vote one way or another?
Uh, any, when will a vote be taken on, based on our meeting?
Yes, if you're gonna take, are you gonna take no action, are you going to vote to take no action?
I have no idea yet.
Or are you going to vote to take action?
We're just in study, we, we've taken that report, I've gotten other reports sent in from other people involved. And so I can't make that promise, I don't know. Any other public comment? Departmental reports.
Just one thing.
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow's administrative questions day, I know a lot of the, the elected officials have good people that work for them, we have great people that work in our office, and, uh, we just wanna let them know that we do appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, sir, second, thank you, sir, all in favor?
Aye.
We know our rule by means.